It is time to call the meeting to order. If everyone would please find a seat. Thank you. Welcome, everyone. It is great to have a packed house. We have some outstanding entertainment waiting for us and a full agenda of a lot of recognitions and rewards. So if you would please stand with me for the pledge and then the treasure hunter pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with due diligence.
Our treasure hunter pledge. As an adult and a treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talent cities and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. Thank you. You may be seated. And now we have the Lincoln Park Academy student performance before us under the direction of George Relling. I think, Dr. Perry, would you like to make a quick announcement before they sing?
Madam Chair, School Board members, Superintendent Prince, before you is Belva. And this month, our students attended music performance assessment. It's like taking the FSA test. And once again this year, they are superior rated. Belva.
So all of you in the audience, whether you're here with us in person or at home watching, please enjoy this performance.
Madam Chair, may I propose something real quick?
Certainly, Superintendent.
I'd request respectfully that we move the public hearing, item 2.1, to after our recognitions ending with the STAR awards, which is 4.1. This is finals week in the nine weeks. We've got students and also employees that need to get home. So I would ask that before we get into the public hearing, where I know there might be some discussion, if we could do our recognitions first to get some folks on.
Certainly, Superintendent. Understand the reasoning, and we will do so. You may proceed, Mr. Superintendent.
That's the only time I'm going to get an applause tonight. Ms. Martin, we will make our way in front of the dais if you could get us started on our recognitions. Our Chief Communications Officer, Lydia Martin.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, Superintendent Dr. Prince. At this time, I'd like to invite Rod Nada, our Executive Director of Federal and Special Programs, to the podium, who will make our first recognition.
Madam Chair, Board members, Superintendent Prince, St. Lucie Public Schools is thrilled to share that Samuel S. Gaines Academy of Emerging Technologies has been selected as an ECTAC Exceeding Expectations Award School. The Exceeding Expectations Project, an undertaking that identifies high-poverty schools demonstrating exceptional progress in enhancing student achievement for all students. In addition to meeting stringent criteria based on quantitative 2022 school grade data, the school completed a commitment to participate survey outlining specific programs and practices they believe contributed to their success. This additional information served to validate the data and provided a comprehensive understanding of Samuel S. Gaines Academy of Emerging Technologies' accomplishments. I'd like to present Keith Davis, the proud principal of Samuel S. Gaines.
I just want to say thank you from Samuel S. Gaines Academy of Emerging Technologies. I've brought my team of coaches with me, my instructional coaches, Michelle Powers and Carrie Cucurulo, and her daughter, someone back. But we just want to say thank you so very much for the opportunity.
All right. Congratulations, Samuel S. Gaines Academy. Our next special order is a book donation for all of our elementary schools from the Fort Pierce Art Club, and the name of the book is "The Crayon Man." Just a little bit of background, Crayola brand crayons were the first kids' crayons ever made, invented by Edwin Binney and C. Harold Smith. The brand's first box of eight Crayola crayons made its debut in 1903. The crayons were sold for a nickel, and the colors were black, brown, blue, red, purple, orange, yellow, and green. Just a little bit of background about Edwin Binney and his family. By 1911, Edwin Binney and his family spent time in St. Lucie County, moving here and owning over 1,000 acres of Citrus Grove in the area, which was then called Fort Pierce Farms. Today, we know it as Endrio. Mr. Binney was an avid sportsman, fisherman, and a community activist. He had a dramatic impact on our county as well as the community back home in Connecticut. He showed himself to be a friend of the community on many occasions. The most noteworthy would probably be his vision in 1919 to have Fort Pierce become a port and an inlet. By his actions, this was accomplished in 1922, completed with a refrigerated terminal for holding fruit and the Fort Pierce inlet, which has since allowed the passage of many vessels. He made possible a much-needed restoration of the bridge to the beach in 1928, and his efforts kept the St. Lucie County Bank from going under in 1929. He put up enough of his own money to open the doors while so many others failed. He helped found our local sea scouts and donated the land along the inlet that is now Fort Pierce Coast Guard Station. Today, there are over 100 different types of crayons being made by Crayola, including crayons that sparkle with glitter, glow-in-the-dark, smell like flowers, change colors, wash-off walls, and other surfaces and materials. In celebration of National Crayon Day, which is March 31st, we have representatives from the Fort Pierce Art Club, Jean Johansson, President of the Fort Pierce Art Club, and Catherine Hensley, former St. Lucie County School Board member, to make the presentation.
Thank you. It's extremely exciting for us in the art club and in the community as a whole and the cultural alliance to be able to do something so positive. As you know, crayons tend to be the first art supply for children. And this district has always been committed to culture, to accurate history, and to the arts of all kinds. And we're very, very proud of that. And we're very pleased to be able to do something positive for our kids to reinforce those issues, all in one fabulous little book. I would introduce Jeanne Johansson to give you a little bit of information.
Good evening. I'm Jeanne Johansson, President of the Fort Pierce Art Club. And we learned that Edwin Binney had been kind of ignored for numerous years. And I submitted with the club recognition for the Hall of Fame in Florida for his philanthropic work. This book that's being donated to you is actually being donated by Sally and Jack Chapman, who is Sally is Edwin Binney's great-granddaughter. And so this is a very special book that's being given to you. There is an invitation in there for you to attend our celebration of Edwin Binney on March 30th in Riverside, Riverwalk, Fort Pierce, Florida, on March 30th from 10 to 2:00. We have representatives from Crayola coming into Fort Pierce to see where Edwin was because of the work we did trying to research him and bring him back. So they're thrilled, and we're thrilled that you and the children of St. Lucie County will learn more again about this great man. Thank you.
Ladies, and accepting the books on behalf of the elementary principals is Denise Rodriguez, our Executive Director of Teaching, Learning, and Leading. If you could come forward, please. As well as Heather Belitho, Director of Elementary Education. Next, I'd like to invite our friends from the Fort Pierce Kiwanis, Deb Mock and Roger Priest, who will make a presentation regarding our St. Lucie County Fair display winners.
Madam Chair, School Board members, I am very pleased to be here representing the Fort Pierce Sunrise Kiwanis Club along with Roger Priest. We are in our 17th year this year of giving away over, well, $7,500 in awards to St. Lucie County schools. I want you to know that Kiwanis, especially for the audience to know, Kiwanis is a global organization of volunteers dedicated to improving the world one child and one community at a time. And our motto is serving children of the world. We strive every year to do our best to help the children of St. Lucie County. At this time, we actually sponsor four key clubs at local high schools here. Those key clubs have been very busy in the community doing playground cleanups for us. They have marched in the sights and sounds parade for us. We also have other projects that they help, WPSL Christmas Kids, and we hope that many of them will apply for our scholarship this year that we give every year. So we are going to announce the winners to the audience. I know the schools are anxious to get their checks tonight. And we will begin with the first-place winners, which you can see. So if Bay Shore Elementary would come forward for $1,000. Manatee Academy, K-8, $1,000, and St. Lucie West Centennial High School. Let's give them all a big round of applause for first place.
Which way do I go? How are we gonna do? Oh, they're just doing first place. Okay. One year he used to do all the names.
While we're taking pictures, I want you to know that this year's theme was called "Our Schools, Your Treasure on the Treasure Coast." And as we go through the awards, please look at the booths. They were so creative this year. We were thrilled with what the students were able to produce. For second place this year, elementary level, Lawnwood Elementary, will receive $500. Palm Point Educational Research, middle K-8, will receive $500. And this year, for the first time, we had a tie in the high school category, so we split the money. And Port St. Lucie High School, along with Lincoln Park Academy, will each receive a check for $375. While they are getting their picture taken, I want to go back and let the audience know that Garber Buick GMC was the donor for the $1,000 awards. And for this award, it is Dermody Pediatric Dentistry. We are so grateful that the community gives us this, a lot of this money for the schools in St. Lucie County. Our next award is for third-place winners. These third-place winners will receive $250. This was sponsored by R.K. Davis Construction. The first award will go to St. Lucie Elementary in the elementary category and Westgate K-8 in the K-8 category. Our next award is given to the school booths who don't quite fit the theme of the theme that we have, but we want to recognize them each year because they're so creative and they are truly out of the box. These schools will receive $250. It is sponsored by the St. Lucie County Fair, which of course, we could not do this without them and their cooperation with us. White City Elementary School, if you would come up, Southport Middle School, and Fort Pierce Central High School. Our next award is called the Kiwanis Pick Winner. We, after the awards have been given, several Kiwanis members walk around and decide which ones we like the most. And we are giving St. Lucy West K-8 $250. This is sponsored by the Consulting Engineers. I don't... OCI, thank you. OCI. I hope a lot of people in the audience got to go to the fair this year and see these booths. They were truly outstanding. The next award is a new award that we are giving out. We had a phone call this year and Fort Pierce Yacht Club Foundation had spoken to one of our Kiwanis members and wanted to help the children of St. Lucy County. And once we explained what was happening at the fair, they jumped right in. And this year, the wildcard award winner is Fairlawn Elementary, and they will receive $250. We always welcome any new sponsorships. So if anyone in the audience would like to contact us, please do. There are so many deserving schools. And finally, our last award is a big one. Because this award is given to the school that has the most people that walk through our building and choose their favorite booth. This year, we had the highest number of votes that we've ever had. 6,747 people walked through our building and voted. And the winner this year is St. Lucy West Centennial High School. They will receive $1,000. This is sponsored by the Supervisor of Elections, St. Lucy County. We want to thank the School Board, especially Lydia Martin, who helps us so much with coming up with a theme, and all of the schools that put in so much hard work. The children did such an outstanding job. And we hope that next year, if you didn't come out to the fair, you will come out and see the outstanding work these kids do and the teachers. They put in a lot of hours to get this. And we really appreciate everything that they do and all of our sponsors. Thank you so much.
Let's give another round of applause to our Kiwanis partners. They truly are amazing community partners, and we sincerely appreciate them. At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Kevin Perry, Assistant to the Superintendent, to the podium, and he will move through the next few special orders of business.
Madam Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent Prince, the King Holiday Observance is a time to celebrate, commemorate, and honor the life, legacy, and impact of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Global citizens have unique opportunities to learn and unite in celebration of Dr. King's groundbreaking work. As we witness nations around the world continue to struggle under the weight of violence, hate, and poverty, today's social, political, and economic landscape reveals the urgent necessity of Dr. King's philosophy and methodology of nonviolence. The establishment of a national holiday honoring Martin Luther King Jr. marked the culmination of a long campaign that began soon after King's assassination and ended on the 2nd of November, 1983, with the signing of legislation by President Ronald Reagan. Public Law 98-144 designated the third Monday in January as the annual federal holiday in King's honor. The St. Lucy County Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Commemorative Committee celebrated its 40th year with the strategic theme "Dream, Believe, Achieve," which defines the 2024 King Holiday Observance event and programming while serving as a compass for all the work the committee will do this upcoming calendar year and beyond. Please welcome our Chair, Diane Williams-Johnson, and retired educator, Lavinia Morgan, with presentations for our schools.
Good evening. Madam Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent Prince. Tonight, I stand before you to present the Chairman's Appreciation Award. And it reads, presented to Dr. John Prince, Superintendent, St. Lucy Public Schools, with sincere gratitude and respect for your outstanding service and support to the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Committee. And it has today's date, March 12, 2024. Dr. Prince, we are just so grateful for you. This does not say all that we feel. You stepped to the plate, you're sticking by us, and we look forward to your support next year. So if you could come up and receive this.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, and Superintendent Prince. On behalf of the Martin Luther King Jr. Commemorative Committee, it is our pleasure to acknowledge the following schools for their participation in the Week of Kindness. During the Week of Kindness, these schools and their students carried out various acts of kindness, different from chores. They assisted elderly in nursing homes. They paid it forward in the community. And they also, the students also did random acts of kindness for their neighbors. So this year, first place goes to Francis K. Sweet Elementary. Second place goes to Windmill Point Elementary. Third place goes to Chester A. Moore Elementary. And certificate of participation goes to Morningside Elementary. Now, I'd like to acknowledge the following schools for placing in their respective categories in the 2024 Martin Luther King Grand Parade. First, I want to say that the parade entries are judged in the following categories: the theme, originality, appearance, performance, and participation. Each entry can receive up to four points in each category from each of the four to five judges. This year, in the elementary category, we have first place Francis K. Sweet Elementary. Second place is Bay Shore Elementary. And third place is Parkway Elementary. In the category for middle school and K-8s, we have first place Dan McCarty Middle. Second place Forest Grove Middle. And third place Creative Arts Academy. In the high school category, our winners, first place Treasure Coast High School. Second place Lincoln Park Academy. And third place Port St. Lucy High School. And our final award is the overall award, and it goes to Fort Pierce Central High School. The overall winner received the highest score of all of the 83 parade entries. Congratulations to the winners, and a special thanks to all of the schools for your continued support and participation.
Madam Chair, School Board Members, and Superintendent Prince, in the 21st century worlds and workplace, leadership skills such as communications, goal setting, and teamwork are essential for everyone, especially young people preparing to meet the challenges of adulthood. With grassroots beginning in 1947, Youth of the Year has evolved into a comprehensive leadership development program, which includes Youth of the Month, Junior Youth of the Year, and... and Youth of the Year. The National Youth of the Year is Boys and Girls Clubs of America's premier recognition experience and our signature effort to foster a new generation of leaders fully prepared to live and lead in a diverse, global, and integrated world economy. Joining me at the podium is, there he is, our CEO, Will Armstead. The Youth of the Year is the highest honor a Boys and Girls Club member can receive. The teens selected as the St. Lucie County Youth of the Year will go on to participate in the National Youth of the Year program, which represents Boys and Girls Clubs of America and is the voice of millions of club youth. For more than 75 years, the Youth of the Year program has recognized young people for their outstanding leadership, service, and academic excellence, and dedication to health and well-being. Ms. Armstead?
Thank you for having me, Madam Chair, Board Members, and I'm going to get this right Superintendent Dr. Prince this time. I definitely, before I get started, Boys and Girls Clubs has been in St. Lucie County for 30 years. I want to thank Jack Kelly and other founders of the board for knowing that we needed that to happen. I also want to thank Dr. Mills, who was a part of the selection committee for this year's Youth of the Year. I definitely want to recognize many of my staff that are in the audience as well. Boys and Girls Clubs of St. Lucie County, we believe young people want to reach their full potential. We serve in 25 or 17 of your locations, two of which are in high schools, in Treasure Coast High School and Fort Pierce Westwood, which are doing phenomenal, lots of kids, lots of teenagers. We are super excited to being there. We want to make sure that our young people have a place to belong, a place that they can call their own, and that our locations, we serve more than 2,000 youth every single day. We appreciate our commitment, we appreciate your commitment to working with Boys and Girls Clubs over the many years, over 20-plus years, and has made a difference in St. Lucie County. I would be remiss if I didn't mention, I did not have to say all of this, that Dr. Perry just said, and I'm so happy because he's going to be our new board chair for Boys and Girls Clubs of St. Lucie County, and I think we did a good job in picking the right man, so I'm going to turn it right back over to him.
So let's meet the teens, representing Percy Peak Teen Center, a senior from Lincoln Park Academy, Deanna Davis, one of our finalists. Finalist from Westside Club, sophomore from Fort Pierce Central High School, Broderick Reynolds. Finalist from the Chuck Hill Unit, a senior from St. Lucie West Centennial High School, Faith Miller. Representing Club Titan, a senior from Treasure Coast High School, Janaya Theophill. Representing Club Panther, a senior from Fort Pierce Westwood Academy, Shania Crutchfield. Representing the Ken Pruitt Unit, a sophomore from Port St. Lucie High School, and the new Youth of the Year, Enrique Rosario. And I'm going to ask briefly if Enrique will join me at the podium and share with you his thoughts.
Thank you to everyone, and right now, I am here to present my Youth of the Year speech. Invisibility, the superpower fantasized by many. For the millions of immigrants living in the United States, however, this is not a fictional superpower. This is the story of our lives. My name is Enrique Rosario. I am 15 years old, and I have been a proud member of the Ken Pruitt Unit Boys and Girls Club for the last three years. I am also a proud member of an important part of the United States population as an immigrant. Seven years ago, with the promises of Disney World and better opportunities, my family and I left the Dominican Republic. As adults, my parents made a logical and sound decision, but as an eight-year-old, this was the end of the world as I knew it. Abandoning my family, my school, my friends, my life, as we chased the American dream, a sense of hopelessness and frustration soon overcame me. I was mad, confused, upset, leaving everything behind. For what? To move somewhere I barely knew? I understood the advantages that came with making such a momentous change, but it was not easy. The thought of it only made me more anxious. On top of it all, English is not my first language. Facing a giant language barrier, I understood my reality. I am an immigrant. Knowing the misconceptions that surround the immigrant community, knowing that some believe we feed off American resources, I made it my goal to prove that we do strive for greatness. Flourishing academically and dominating the English language, I was doing great, except I still felt unseen, overlooked, invisible. Then, through my Boys and Girls Club, I found a sense of belonging. Finally, I felt seen. I am here today to advocate for the youth like me, the youth who left their homes chasing the glorious American dream, facing barrier after barrier, injustice after injustice. Educational resources for immigrant youth must be made accessible in our school, after-school programs, and everywhere in our community. A change must be made, and the immigrant struggle must be made visible. The only question left to ask is, do you see us? Thank you.
I don't mean to take the meeting over, but have you ever seen in college athletics, you start recruiting younger and younger and younger, and you try to get as early commitments, they're getting commitments from seventh, eighth, ninth grade students to commit to their schools to play athletics? I got a question, Enrique, and I heard something, and I just want to make sure and confirm it's true. What do you want to be when you get out of college?
Well, I want to be a teacher.
Well, Enrique, I'm going to tell you right now, you're going to get your first offer today. Normally, normally, we wait and make this commitment to our graduating seniors the day they graduate, but I'm going to go ahead and make this commitment to you. Enrique, this certificate is a promise is a promise, I'm going to give you this today, that as soon as you graduate from college, you are guaranteed a job as a teacher in St. Lucie County.
We'll mention that some were here, but I'm going to ask some of the Boys Club employees that are here, if you please stand so that we can recognize and see you, all members, workers of... Thank you. I think I'm up again. Madam Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent Prince, near and dear to my heart, arts education, comprising of a rich array of disciplines, including dance, music, theater, and visual arts, is a core academic subject, an essential element of a complete and balanced education for all students. Beyond the numbers, we know the arts matter for a wholly human reason. They illuminate, they console, and they articulate. In short, they help us to explore and express the wonderfully messy business of being human. As we may, as you may surmise by the beautiful artwork that adorns the building and the many arts-related activities occurring this month, such as the Music in Our Schools Month concert on the 27th at 6:30 at the Finn Center, your invitation. March is designated as National Arts in Our Schools Month. Its purpose is to recognize the fact that all children deserve arts-rich schools, those with high-quality arts programs and comprehensive course offerings that benefit students in and outside of the art or dance studio, music room, or stage. The goal of this month-long event is to stress the importance of quality arts education programs in our schools. It also ensures that America's students have access to a comprehensive, sequential arts education taught by highly qualified arts educators. The benefit of art education form the basis of our world-class standards developed by the United States Department of Education and the National Endowment for the Arts, and are celebrated here in St. Lucie Public Schools. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. George Ramming, Jr., the 2024 finalist for Distinguished Minority Educator of the Year and the Director of the Superior-rated Lincoln Park Chorus to present our Arts in Our Schools Month proclamation. Mr. Ramming.
Madam Chair, Board Members, and Dr. Prince, whereas March has been designated by the National Dance Education Organization as Dance in Our Schools Month, by the National Association for Music Education as Music in Our Schools Month, by the National Theater Association as Theater in Our Schools Month, and by the Council for Art Education as Youth Art Month. And whereas National Arts in Our Schools Month recognizes the fact that all children deserve art-rich schools, and is supported by the National Association for Music, Art, Dance, and Theater in cooperation with the U.S. Department of Education. And whereas research increasingly shows that arts education heightens engagement for all students, and learning in the arts uniquely equips students with the skills and creativity, divergent thinking, problem-solving, and teamwork that they need to be college and career-ready. These benefits of art education form the basis of world-class standards developed by the U.S. Department of Education and the National Endowment for the Arts. And whereas arts-rich schools, those with high-quality arts programs and comprehensive course offerings, includes four separate and distinct disciplines: dance, music, theater, and visual arts, each with its own body of knowledge and skills. And whereas arts learning is increasingly understood as an essential skill needed to succeed in the 21st century workforce. And whereas St. Lucie Public Schools recognizes the arts as a crucial element of a balanced education for all students as outlined in the Every Student Succeeds Act and the state law, and that certified K-12 educators bring highly specialized technical skills and innovative teaching methods to daily instruction. And whereas March is filled with great reasons to focus on arts education in our schools and to urge all citizens to advocate, celebrate, and participate to show their support for the arts.
Superintendent Prince, we request that you recommend adoption? Last but certainly not least, St. Lucie Public Schools has a rich and storied history of supporting the arts. In doing so, music and music education is important to the curriculum of all students. Each year in the month of March, we actively acknowledge the powerful role of arts education in the lives of our students and promote the arts in our schools as important to a complete education. Our acknowledgement is a testament to St. Lucie Public Schools' unwavering dedication to the arts. As we continue our Arts in Our Schools celebration, we'd like to recognize some music students for their outstanding musical performances. Now, we often hear of athletes and athletic teams that make it to state. These students also made it to state. Acceptance into one of these elite groups is a direct result of the talent, dedication, and musicianship of these accomplished students and the superior instruction provided by their dynamic music teachers. Once selected, these students are afforded the opportunity to perform at the highest level with peers from across the state. These students will be forever known as and recognized as All-State musicians. From St. Lucie West Centennial High School, participating in the TRIAM Music Honor Society Leadership Program, Jamie Salvador, Jada Hernandez, Ryan Matway, Alyssa Herzog, Helen Novak, Kyle Yakinjuk, and Richard Menito, if they would come forward. From St. Lucie West K-8, this student played first chair in the seventh and eighth-grade honors band, his first year there, his teacher is the fantastic Mrs. Licari, Ryan Segway. Sorry about that. From Cass, eighth grade, making their first appearance at All-State in the middle school's honors band, their teacher is Mr. Ranelis, Evelyn Laster Placco. From Southport Middle School, making their first appearance in the All-State honors band, Alejandro Delatorre. Teacher is Mr. Cromer. If the teachers are here, come on up for me, please, as I call your student. From Lincoln Park Academy, eighth grade, making her first appearance in the All-State Middle School Honors Orchestra, her teacher is Ms. Hopkins, Christine Gergli. And from Lincoln Park Academy, making her first appearance in the SSAA chorus under the direction of Mr. Ramming, Dalida de Cambra. In the 12th grade, from St. Lucie West Centennial High School, band director, Mr. Hose, making their first appearance in the Allstate High School Honor Band, Alton Jean. Now, this is when it gets interesting. She's only in the 10th grade, but she has made her fourth appearance in the LPA, in the Allstate Orchestra, her teacher again is Ms. Hopkins. I think we saw her last year at this time. She's in 10th grade, so that means we've got two more years to see her. No weight on her shoulders, Gisele Arana Cisneros. And last but certainly not least, he's in the 12th grade at Treasure Coast High School. He too has been a member of Allstate TTB choir for four years. Now, the cool part is that his father was in the Allstate chorus for four years. His grandmother is one of our retired educators. We know him as AJ. Please welcome Alvin Lyons from Treasure Coast High School. Ms. Rabandi is his teacher. And while we set up for a picture, if we have any parents of these awesome Allstate musicians in the audience, please stand and be recognized for me at this time. in the audience, please stand and be recognized for me at this time. Hey, Jamie. And after Doug takes a picture, I need you to hold because we have a lot of cameras Once again, we'd like to invite you to the Music in Our Schools Month concert on February and March the 27th at 6:30 at the Finn Center. One more time for these awesome Allstate students.
At this time, I'd like to invite Esther Rivera, Director of Student Services, to the podium, who will recognize our AIM for 100 February Attendance Awards.
Good evening, Madam Chair Holly, Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Prince. Our mission in St. Lucy Public Schools is to ensure that all students graduate from safe and caring schools. In order to succeed, we need to ensure that all students and educators are in attendance to provide quality education. Our AIM for 100 initiative is to recognize the efforts of schools where attendance is a top priority. In our last board meeting, five schools were recognized for having made significant improvement efforts in attendance on early dismissal days. For the month of February, we are acknowledging six schools who had the highest attendance rate in targeted grades, which include kindergarten, 8th Grade, and 12th Grade on our last early dismissal day. Principals, when I call your school, please come up with your attendance teams and open up that banner so we could show some pride. Our first winner in kindergarten, St. Lucy West K-8 with 95 percentile, St. Lucy West K-8, please come up. Kindergarten as well, Rivers Edge Elementary with 94.7 percentile. 8th Grade winners, we have Cass with 96.6 percentile points. We have Southport Middle School with 92.7 percentile points. Our 12th Grade winners, we have Lincoln Park Academy with 93.2 percentile points. And last but not least, our last high school in 12th Grade, St. Lucy West Centennial High
Okay, and last but certainly not least, we have our star recipient for this month. That is Melissa Phillips Hill from the Creative Arts Academy. She is an ESC Specialist. If she could come forward. Jennifer Carey, on behalf of the ESC Program Specialists, wanted to nominate Melissa for the Star Award. She states Melissa is an embodiment of kindness and positivity. Her deep care for the students on her campus is evident in the support systems she establishes and the conferences she conducts to ensure their academic and personal growth. Her attentiveness, thoughtfulness, and curiosity shine through all ESC trainings. Her contributions are highly valued by the ESC Department.
We will now move to our public hearing, the Approval of Adoption of Neola Policies. The public hearing is now open. Are there any that wish to speak to this content specifically? And I do have one unscheduled speaker from Ms. Galeano, so welcome to the podium. And just to confirm, this has to do with the adoption of the Neola policies, and you have three minutes, which our attorney will regulate for us.
All right. Good evening. For we wrestle not against flesh and blood, but against principalities, against powers, against rulers of the darkness of this world, against spiritual wickedness in high places, Ephesians 6:12. Today, that's you. Definition: Freedom of speech is a right to express ideas, opinions, thoughts without facing punishment from the government. Again, that's you. First Amendment protects this right by prohibiting making laws or rules that would curtail freedom of speech of we, the people, we, the taxpayers of your paychecks. But cutting time from parents and the community from exercising our constitutional rights because you want to go home, you don't want to hear the repetition, you want to know what's already been said, you don't want to hear it, and to have predetermined the outcome with no intention of changing your minds is wrong. The once-a-month meetings are already timed for minimal attendance. And now with different things coming up, like the change of the districts, news stories that come out with information you don't want to be held accountable for, or anything for that matter, since your decisions are done and pushed through in consent agenda and back to in the back rooms of this building. Through the years, the parents and the community have handed their children over all to all of you. Blind eyes fall on things that are beyond reason, morality, security, and decency. Now you want to take the last opening to save their children, time to be heard. You have weeks to discuss, change, manipulate, indoctrinate situations, cutting the only time parents have to express their needs and concerns is wrong. I was here for two and a half years, fighting against the porn and non-age-appropriate books in the media centers. Over 40,000 students are in this system, and not one parent showed up to save their child. What you are scared of, the parents might just wake up one day and realize what is really going on here. They may start realizing the things that they thought wasn't that bad are really ungodly and evil. But by then, there is no place to go to speak.
30 seconds.
You are the darkness that creeps in with small changes that will soon take this community's freedom away. God chose us to place us in this specific generation with a unique purpose to fulfill. Don't change the times. Keep it open for all who need it. This is the Constitution, but mainly, it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
And our next speaker, Mr. Charlie Frank Matthews. Mr. Matthews, welcome to the podium. And again, to reiterate that this is about the Neola policies, and you will have three minutes. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, and all members, colleagues of the school board, and Dr. Prince, Superintendent, my name is Charlie Frank Matthews, and I, at this present, represent as President of the St. Lucy County Concerned Citizen, Inc. We have talked about this, and we go back in our recent history. We've had a public official in one setting did not want to even take the cell phone and answer it. That was a federal case here in this county. My good friend here, Knight, that was the person that introduced that to the federal courts. We are saying to you, the citizens, taxpayers, and the parents all have a right. Don't cut that First Amendment right. The other thing, too, every board that I've gone to, public boards, whether it's a county or city, it seems like you're begging for citizens to participate, but when citizens come out, for whatever reason, you deny them, and you make it look like they are not an active member of the community. The thing that bothers me more than anything, and I'm appalled, is that, when I was growing up, there was a motto, "For the people, of the people, and by the people." It seems like you, as a school board, does not care. I would tell you that I would ask that you deny any actions to change it. My last thing I want to say...
Mr. Matthews, we've got a little electrical problem, so we will pause.
It looks good, Charlie.
And lastly, I would say, don't have it where we'll have to take you legally somewhere else, other than the school board. It's not a threat, it's just telling you that the people want to be heard, and if it's not broke, please don't fix it.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Are there any others that wish to speak to this topic? Yes, sir. I don't have a form for you, so if you would just state your name and address.
Rick Reed, 2625 South US1, Fort Pierce, Florida. You know, to piggyback, I'm also the Vice President of St. Lucy County, St. Lucy, I was the Vice President in ACP, but I'm the Vice President of the St. Lucy County Concerned Citizen for about 22 years now. If it ain't broke, like Charlie said, don't fix it. What are y'all afraid of that you don't want? You want to inhibit, not prohibit, but inhibit, the ability for the public to come before you. Most of the people...
Pause again, Mr. Reed.
Did y'all pay your light bill?
I'm going to test your mic, Mr. Reed.
Is it working?
It's working. You may proceed.
Why would you not, why would you want to limit the ability for parents and the members of St. Lucy County to come and address y'all and make it hard? Most of the people in this community are working people. They, to get here before 5:00 and to go through the dog and pony show, the children... I would expect this from Mayor Hudson in the City of Fort Pierce, they have a lot to hide. I wouldn't expect y'all to do this. And, you know, sunshine is a wonderful thing. Even bad speech is free speech. So if someone comes up here, Oprah Winfrey has taught us and made billions of dollars teaching us, when you know better, you do better. What are y'all afraid of? I'm not going to be redundant, I'm just going to say that I would strongly urge, there are those of us, I feel very strongly, and I have a track record of defending free speech in St. Lucy County. And I will move heaven and earth to make sure that it's done. Money won't be an object. And it is our sacred right, and the people of St. Lucy County, and the parents, and the taxpayers of St. Lucy County should be able to come here conveniently and address y'all and not be limited. So I strongly urge you to think about what you're doing tonight.
Are there any others that wish to address this? And again, if you'd state your name and address, please.
Sure. Aurelia Fenty, 3321 Southwest Perrine Street, Port St. Lucie.
I'm sorry, may I interrupt? I just want to apologize to the speakers. We're having some power surge to our equipment. I do apologize. They're trying to work to see what the issue is, but I just want to make sure that we do pause if we do have any power outages. But this, it is being recorded, we're trying to broadcast it, but they don't know what the issue is.
Okay. Thank you. So my name is Aurelia Fenty, and I am a parent to a high school student in St. Lucy County. So I'm here tonight as well, just to piggyback off the other speakers. As a parent, I feel we already have a barrier to come into these meetings at 5:00 PM. I mean, we're all working parents, so hustling and bustling to get here, and then when we get here, now we have limited time that we're able to speak. As a parent, with that barrier, I feel like it's another barrier that we are not, our voices are not being able to be heard. That's how I feel. It is our right to speak, it is our right to be here, and I don't feel like the time being decreased is creating an inviting environment for parents to attend these meetings. I'm here, I'm sure there's other parents here tonight, but the hopes is that other parents will come out as well and know that these meetings are for us as well. And as parents, we have rights, and as parents, you know, we should be able to be here and express any concerns that we have. So I just, I disagree with the time change. Again, I just feel like it's another way to just shut our mouths. So, thank you.
Any others that wish to address this issue? The public portion of this hearing, then, is closed. Mr. Superintendent, we'll receive your recommendation.
I recommend the board approve the proposed adoption of Neola policies in compliance with changes in related rules, regulations, and statutes as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion, Board Members?
I certainly want to have discussion on this. I'm disappointed. I'm disappointed that this ever even came up with this board. As I said at the workshop, it's wrong. We should not be discouraging people from bringing their thoughts and their concerns about this public system, educational system. Our job as a board, the purpose of a board, school board, comes from Bylaw 118. The purpose of this board is to encourage its citizens to bring their thoughts and their concerns about the educational system to the attention of this body. There is no reason on earth, as I said it already, I'm going to say it again, that we should be changing something that is not broken. Here in St. Lucy County, I've been a board member for 14 years. I have been at just about every single board meeting, even controversial board meetings. The people have come here respectful. We've had a few of them that's a little weird, but we can address that. We are to represent these citizens. We were voted and chosen to be board members and to stand up for the people's rights. And I myself will not stand for this. Now, to give people one minute to speak is ridiculous. It is taking people's freedom of speech. And I will stand on that. My suggestion, board, is that we don't do this to the people. We shouldn't do this to the people. And I don't understand why my voice is coming on deaf ears, because we're all here to represent our community. A board member's job, as I already said, is to encourage the people to come and speak. So, as I've already said also, if I have to stay here for three, four, or five hours... So, as I've already said also, if I have to stay here for three, four, or five hours with a special meeting where people want their voices to be heard, that's what they voted me to do, and that is what I will do. I suggest that we table this until we have further discussion, and I hope my voice does not fall upon deaf ears.
Madam Chair. Dr. Mills, could you tell me the amount of time each person's allowed to speak? Do you remember the breakdown?
It used to be, for a scheduled speaker, they could speak for five minutes if they're scheduled. If they're unscheduled, they can speak for three minutes, and that is what it is currently now, unless we vote otherwise.
And what's the proposed?
The proposed is that, take away the five minutes and make it three minutes, for scheduled, for all speakers, scheduled speakers and unscheduled speakers alike. And then if it's more than 10 people, give them only two minutes. And if it's more than 20 people, give them one minute. Now, 20 minutes, I mean, two minutes, is ridiculous, in my opinion, but one minute? Something's wrong with that, and I won't stand for it. Not me, I'm going to speak up, and I'm not going to stand for it, because the people, we the people, voted me in this office, and when they're ready for me to go, I'll go. But until then, I'm going to stand up for what I believe is right, and I'm not going along with no... I'm shocked that we would even come to this place.
Mr. Ingersoll, you still have the floor.
No, that's good. I just wanted to make sure we were all under the understanding of what was going on.
Any other board members?
What our superintendent is proposing violates the First Amendment to our Constitution, which enshrines each individual's right to petition the government for redress of grievance. That's what the First Amendment says. We seem to forget that we are on this board as public servants. That's who we are, public servants. The citizens of this county elected us to serve on their behalf. We are accountable to you, 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 you. The parents and children, and trust, of the children entrusted us to be treated, I'm sorry, the parents of the children entrusted us should not be treated as nuisances. Our parents have a voice, you have a voice. They have opinions, you have opinions, and deserve to be heard. It is bad enough that the public to be heard is put at the end of the meeting and on-recorded for other citizens to view, and for any discontent to go on-recorded and unacknowledged. Now we are proposing to lay additional burdens on them, the parents. When we should be moving towards greater transparency, instead, we are opting for less. Just so you know, the school districts in Florida that record and stream their meetings do so in their entirety. They do not stop the recording when it's time for the unscheduled speakers to be heard. I called, I called 57 school districts and had conversations with 31 of them, and more than 90% do not have scheduled speakers. That means you don't have to schedule to speak. And like St. Lucie County, their time limit is three minutes for unscheduled speakers, regardless of the number of speakers. Out of the 36 districts, three districts, Alachua, Brevard, and Orange County, reduce the time to one minute as the number of speakers increases. Many people prepare their remarks with the understanding that they have three minutes in which to present their thoughts and opinions. Now telling them at the last minute, that's when they get here, and there's more than 21 speakers, or more than 10 speakers, that they will only have two minutes or one minute because it's inconvenient for the board, is not fair to them, nor is it fair to the board. The board should want to hear from our constituents. The board should want to consider their opinions. Is it the position of my fellow board members that what the public has to say holds a little, if any importance, and doesn't concern them? That is what voting yes to this proposal amounts to. As for redundancy, who determines what's redundant? If there are 50 parents wishing to lodge their disapproval of a proposal, or say something that's going on within our schools, are they considered redundant? What if the reasons they disapprove are different? Regardless, our community deserves the right to exercise their First Amendment rights. Our community deserves to be heard. Our community, you, 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 deserves our respect, and our community deserves our time. As someone who understands that not having the freedom to express your views means not having freedom, I must oppose this proposal, and I will be voting no. Thank you.
Mr. Kelly, can you comment?
Yeah, okay. I hear about freedom of speech, and we the people, and Donna, and Dr. Mills, I'm a we the people. I vote for everything for the Constitution, I'm with it 100%. Charlie Frank, we haven't done anything lately, but you and I have always been on the same page. You're a common sense guy, I respect you. So what I want you to do is listen to what I have to say. You heard what they said, and it's about interpretation. Dr. Wild loves it when I talk about interpretation. Everything is about interpretation, and a little bit of the interpretation here, and one of them, one of the interpretations is what you read in the newspaper, which is wrong. And the interpretations you just heard are wrong. My interpretation says that it's wrong. First of all, this is not something that we just brought up, this was a year ago when this became at a workshop. This is not the superintendent who brought this, that is incorrect. We asked, the board asked, to update our policies, go by what Neola says and others, we did a lot of work on it. We found out, and correct me if I'm wrong, anybody here up in front, 80 to 90% of not just the school board government entities, but all commissions, councils in the state of Florida, have a three-minute, they do three minutes, 80 to 90%. Now, am I correct, am I saying that correctly? Correct me. I am, I was shaking her heads, okay. We don't have, just have one member call boards, like, we all call boards, but that's what we did, we found out what they do, and went by their policies and how to make it better. Now I want to ask you this, okay? And I mean, it's rhetorical, I don't want you to answer me, Charlie, but you read the article in the paper, Mr. Fontaine, who hasn't been here very long, I agree with many of his articles, he's incorrect. The top of the, top of the thing said that we are going to limit people from talking. It's absolutely incorrect. And then he went on to say that, also, he talked a length about how, spoke to you, ma'am, about how, why we want people to come up and register, and they can't do it after 5:00 and how unfair that is, and they won't be able to talk, somebody comes from work and whatever, okay? That it's unfair. I say it's unfair to the people that can't get here at 5:00 and have to talk at the end. Why do the people who can get here at 5:00 get five minutes, and the people at the end get only three? That's unfair. That's not fair, right? I think everybody should get the same. Let them all get three minutes. If the guy at the beginning can't get what he wants across in three minutes, the guy in the newspaper, I read his article, which I completely, most of it was wrong, some of it was true, but that article, I read it in two minutes. I could probably say it in less time than that, because I had to inject it and read it all. It's not fair to the person who can get here by 5:00 to get five minutes, and the person at the end only get three. Everybody should get the same, everybody should get treated fairly. Isn't that the way we do things in this country? Everybody's the same? I have an opinion, they have an opinion, you vote on it. That's what we do up here, okay? It isn't just that, they went on to say that you had to be here by 5:00, the newspaper was incorrect, you don't have to be here by 5:00 to speak, you can speak at the end of the meeting, and again, it's only five. Now, we spoke about this at the last workshop, and Dr. Mills brought up a good point, she brings up good points all the time. Been here 14 years, Mr. Kelly, right? 14 years, Dr. Mills? Never have I ever had anything where we had 20, 30, 40 people get up and speak. Well, that's, that's great, and I hope it stays like that. I'm not going to be here very shortly, so this is for the board to decide on doing these things. This is their policies. She's right, that hasn't happened. But it happened to me on other boards where we had, we went to late in the morning, and you're shaking your head, but we did, we stayed till 2:00. That's what we were supposed to do. I don't mind staying. If I have 100 people that want to speak, but you know what? They have to speak, they all have to have the same amount of time, the same amount of time. If I can have 20 people speak in an hour compared to 12 people speak in an hour, I think that's more than fair, especially if the other districts, everybody else in the state does that. That's what's fair. Not five minutes for you, because you can get here at 5:00, and you only get three, okay? This is not a hill that I want to have a fight over and shoot at people and have a big discussion about. This isn't a hill, this is a mo-hill. This is just a bump, especially for this group, because it's probably never going to happen, but as I said, I'm a Boy Scout, be prepared, because somebody could come up someday and say, "Hey, I want something new for the board, Troy, listen to this one. If we want better attendance, if my child comes and attends 100% for the whole year, I want him not to be able to have to take his final exams." And I'm hearing that about some districts already. I think we might get more than 50 people at a meeting that night, and if we did, I would like to have the chair to be able to say, "You're going to get two minutes, or three minutes, or whatever you're going to get," because of that. So my motto's always been, because I'm an Eagle Boy Scout, is be prepared. Be prepared if that happens. But don't tell me that this guy can speak five minutes, that guy can only speak three. That's not fair. So it's freedom of speech, it's how you look at it, it's interpretation, just take my interpretation. I get the freedom of speech also, so. I know I'm 100 years old, and I've seen it go both ways, and you know what? It's not in perpetuity. If we do this tonight, it doesn't mean next year, if it doesn't work out, Troy, Debbie, Donna, you change it back. That's all. We did it on the city council, we had to change some things back. When I first got on the city council, we, everybody, everybody had to speak at the end of the meeting, and they only got, they got five minutes, I think, or three minutes, I forget. Put it to the beginning of the meeting, put it back again three years later, so it's not in perpetuity, and it is freedom of speech, but I want it to be fair. That's all I got to say, and don't be mad at me, Charlie, I love you.
Dr. Mills?
I'd like to address Mr. Kelly's comments. Mr. Kelly, you said, "We visited this a year ago," and you're correct, we did, and you knew what my stance was a year ago. And I don't change when I really believe something is the right thing to do. So a year ago, when we brought it up, I said, "No, it's not right." The other thing is, when you talk, Mr. Kelly, about being fair, I agree with you. Everybody should get three minutes. If we're going to change anything, it would be from the scheduled speaker, five minutes to three minutes, but everybody should get three minutes, that's fair. Not some get three, everybody came at the same time, but some gave their form in, turned their form in before others. So therefore, there's 30 people that show up, they all showed up on time, they all turned their forms in. The first 10 of those people will get the three minutes. The next 10 will get only two minutes, and the next 10 will get only one minute. That is what's not fair about this. And when we talk about interpretation, as an African-American female, the history that we have here in the South is that some people interpreted that it was okay to make other human beings slaves. It was okay to kill them, it was okay to beat them, it was okay to pluck their eyes out. Their interpretation was, it was okay. Then you look at the people in the North, their interpretation was, "No, we're going to fight for the freedom of all mankind." Just because we interpret something differently, don't make it both right or both wrong. We have to look at what is the right thing to do. And that is why I made that stance a year ago, and that's why I'm making it now, and that is why I'm extremely disappointed that we, as a board, St. Lucie County Board, which I have been proud to serve on, we have made advances that have been incredible advances for our children. But we live in a political climate that want to take so much of that away. So much education and the right thing to teach our children, they want it taken away. And we cannot sit still and say, "That's their interpretation, let them do what they want to do." We can't, if we do that, we will lose ground in what we have gained, especially here in the South. I'm from up north originally, and I'm so thankful, but at one point, my parents came from the South. Saying that we're right, don't make us right. And I think that most people, after 14 years of serving on this board, know that Dr. Mills is going to do what she thinks is right. Because when I lay my head down at night, I'm going to say I did the right thing. And my concern is about the people, because it's not about me, but I don't care what you think if you think in the wrong way. I know right from wrong. And I will not agree or be intimidated by anyone when it comes to doing what I believe is the right thing, no matter what you say. Don't make me no difference. When I leave, I leave here. And as a Christian believer, I will say to the Lord, "What's my next assignment?" But I cannot make excuses for taking people's fairness away from them. Some of them only get one minute, some get two, some get five. Who's to decide who gets what if all 30 people show up at the same time?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ingersoll?
I need some interpretation here, and I prefer, Mr. Tresivio, can you read the policy? Because I totally interpreted it differently. My, when I read the policy, as if we had 21 speakers sign up, everyone got a minute, not the first 10 got three, not the next couple got two, like Dr. Mills is interpreting the policy.
May I?
Please.
That's the correct interpretation, your interpretation, Mr. Ingersoll?
So when you have 21 speakers, everyone gets one minute? Not the first 10 get three minutes, not the next 10 get two minutes? The interpretation is, is when you reach 21, everyone gets a minute.
Exactly.
That's, that's the policy.
But is that fair for everyone to get just a minute speech? That's the, that's the point.
Oh, I'm not debating that either way. You were just telling me the interpretation of the policy, and I interpreted the policy differently, and I needed some clarification first.
I understand. Still not fair, though.
Okay, Madam Chair.
Mr. Kelly?
Okay, I got a problem now, okay? I got to get some clarification here, and maybe this is my fault. The first 21 people that speak on this policy, do those people get three minutes each?
No, sir. No, sir, they don't.
I got a problem, Mr. Ingersoll. I thought the first 21 people were going to get the three minutes, and everybody after that was going to go to one or two minutes. I got a problem with that.
Could I interject something here?
Now you got a problem, you got a problem with the vote. I know my other stuff is interpretation.
We don't got a problem, we have a motion, we have a second.
I know, I know you do, so.
We're discussing.
I seconded that motion.
The chair needs the floor, please. Mr. Torcivia, my understanding of what we're voting on, what the motion is, is to adopt the Neola policies in their totality.
That's correct.
I would like to suggest that we extrapolate the one section that the public is speaking on and the board members are having different interpretations on and bring that back at another time. I don't want all of our policies to be null and void and the motion is for the totality of the policies, correct?
That's correct. So, so if the maker of the motion agrees, he could withdraw his motion, make a new motion to approve all the policies except for this one particular policy and that will be carved out and discussed another day.
Right. And I think there's too much misinterpretation, Mr. Superintendent.
May I, may I just also, wouldn't we need to make a motion to replace that one policy with our existing policy so we do have, so we would maintain our current?
The appropriate motion would be for it to stay as is.
Okay. Yep, okay. So.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, Madam Chair. So, before we make the motion, I, I need some clarification myself. Um, um, we are taking out anything and everything that has to do with the time, the public to be heard. We are going to take out all that section. We are going to look at that section and make sure that everything is copacetic above board, right?
And that all board members understand the interpretation, yes.
Let me finish. We're going to take all of that out. Public to be heard, anything that has the word "public to be heard" or anything that has to do with speaking or whatever, we need to take that out because we don't want anything to fly in under the radar. Okay, then we approve. So, if we could take, make sure that that's all taken out and that we have an understanding and then we'll come back and address it. And as for the, the, the part with the, the, that, um, that petition, that's, that, that we, that we are coming to in the superintendent's, um, whatever it is, um, that part, we're going to put that on hold as well.
We need to, I need to be clear on what you're saying, whatever that is.
I'm going to read it to you.
Madam Chairman.
No, I, I have the floor still, so let me finish. The part that we have, that, that, that Mr. Ingers, Mr. Kelly is, um, he's, his suggestion. The, with his suggestion, that petition.
That part is not part of the policies that we're voting on tonight?
It is not a part of the policy yet.
That is correct.
So, but we are not going to be voting on that because that, that is in his, um, agenda to be voted on.
What we'd vote on tonight is advertising to discuss that at the next meeting. We're not voting on to approve it or disprove it. We're voting on the authority to advertise, to have a public hearing on it.
But we have to look at that as well and make sure, address all of that is what I'm saying, as one, rather than advertise it and then have to come back and talk about it.
But if it's advertised, we can talk about it if we have a meeting in between.
Okay. All I'm, all I'm trying to avoid is anything just passing under the radar.
And I, I, I hear you, I hear you. Is it, um, possible, Mr. Torcivia, to pull, and we might need Dr. Wild's help on this, to pull the specific section of Neola?
Yeah, Dr. Wild has the, the exact policy and she can explain what we are going to be recommending and, or what the recommendation to the board would be.
Madam Chair, before Dr. Wild speaks, can I just go ahead and, and pull my motion so we start fresh? I'm just going to go ahead and go.
You can pull your motion if Mr. Kelly is willing to pull his second.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so we're starting fresh.
So, we're starting fresh.
Thank you.
Dr. Wild, do you have the numbers to lead us so that we can be very specific about what is not included in the vote tonight?
I do, yes. Thank you. Uh, what I hear you saying is that you would like to approve the rest of the Neola policy book with the exception of oh-one-six-nine-point-one. And in the interim, until you bring it back for further discussion, maintain current board policy two-point-two-two, section five A through G. I would like Mr. Torcivia to review that as well, but that is what I hear you talking about because our current policy, two-point-two-two, number five, A through G, addresses public participation at board meetings and it includes our current unscheduled speakers at five minutes, scheduled speakers at three, with no mention of tiering it based on the number of speakers present.
And Dr. Wild, if you wouldn't mind, would you read the Neola section so that everyone is clear what it is we're pulling?
Yes. Unless you want to fragment it more, I was hearing that you would pull this entire policy number that is titled "Public Participation at Board Meetings" and that is oh-one-six-nine-point-one. Neola policy number oh-one-six-nine-point-one.
Okay. I'd like for transparency purposes to have the specific, specific, um, thing. So, we are fresh back and Mr. Superintendent, do you have an alternate recommendation to bring before us about the approval of the adoption of Neola policies?
Let me, I hope I get this right. So, I, I recommend the board approve the proposed adoption of Neola policies in compliance with changes related to rules, regulations, and statutes as presented with the exception of policy zero-one-six-nine-point-one, which is public participation at board meetings and that's two-point-two-two, numbers five through A-G.
Um, I think we, we need to stipulate that it's the existing policy number.
Yes. Ellen, I'm waiting for you.
No, you're right. A through G, you said A through G, right?
Yeah, A through G.
Mr. Attorney, Torcivia, does that sound?
Yes. So, my understanding, Superintendent said, is you're going to adopt the entire policy other than zero-one-six-nine-point-one, which is the public participation, and you're going to continue with your existing policy, two-point-two-two, five A to G.
That is correct. That is my intent.
Okay.
So moved.
I have a motion, we have a second. We have a second from Dr. Mills. Any conversation on this motion? Hearing none, we will vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five-zero. Okay, thank you for your patience with that. I know we still have quite a bit to get through, so we will move right away to our ESAL report. And I don't know that anyone's here tonight for that. Don't see CWA? No report. We're glad you're here. Thank you. And I'm not sure that our youth advisory council, Noah, are you going to deliver it? Thank you. Welcome to the podium, Noah, and thank you for standing in for Ashir.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, Dr. Prince, members of the school board. I'm happy to be joined with you today on updates for our youth advisory council. I am the secretary, Noah Fox Goodman. Unfortunately, Asher Adrees had to leave early this evening for religious reasons. As we approached spring break, there were some things that were discussed at our youth advisory council. It was held at Fort Pierce Central in, in the Central Cafe this, this March. Council members engaged in discussion regarding senior tracking in high schools and making sure everyone graduates. Concerns regarding statewide testing were also brought forward as many students are often unaware of testing dates and many students do not show up on testing dates. Certain schools also have limited capacity to support students who are in classrooms that must be removed so that there can be enough accommodations for students that are testing. When this occurs in schools, students think that they're going to show up to school with nothing to do and they're going to be sitting in a room for hours on end waiting for test takers to be finished. And as we have discussed our attendance goals this year, we look to these testing days and with fast testing happening multiple times a year, SAT testing and the like, many students are hindering our goals for very much improved attendance in St. Lucie County on these testing dates. Concerns regarding the ACE program were also raised. The students who wish to drop ACE classes at certain schools are unable to do so without dropping the program as a whole. They're only allowed to take certain ACE classes and if they wish to take honors classes or other types of courses, they must do so in whole. So, this was discussed in addition to discussion on reparations and trying to implement a system that helps students that are trying to take a multitude of courses and programs. One solution was raised, which was to have students interact with their counselors and have discussions on what programs they would actually like to take and schedule which classes in the ACE program are appropriate for them without having to adopt the entire ACE program. Recently, there was a change to our system in that students who receive proficient test scores in certain subjects must be placed into the ACE classes. But doing so and adopting the ACE program is counterintuitive as some students have test scores that mean they are not as proficient in math and so they will take courses in the math subjects where they will not perform well, but they can't take courses in their English classes for the ACE program unless they want to include every single subject to remain in the program. So, the council looks forward to meeting here on Monday, April first, to further our discussion and we will be joined by guest speaker, Mrs. Hargadine, to discuss the council's five-year district plan and we will be meeting you guys then. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Noah, and really appreciate you standing in for Ashir so that he could get home appropriately. Okay, all of our reports have been given. We will now move to the consent agenda. Mr. Superintendent, well, before you give your recommendation, could I have a motion to accept the adoption of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five-zero. Mr. Superintendent, we'll receive your recommendation.
I recommend the board approve the consent agenda as submitted.
So moved.
And before we vote on that motion, are there any items that you wish to remove for separate discussion or vote? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We then move, again, board members, just a reminder of the informational reports regarding all of the charter school activities that are there for your information. And then we move, Mr. Superintendent, to your report.
Okay. First of all, I want to thank once again the LPA chorus. It's always a pleasure whenever we have students perform, so I want to thank them. Also, whenever you exit today, please take a look at some of our student artwork. We're really proud of the work that our students do. Also, I want you to note the, the giant SLPS props we have in the lobby, which is really cool. I want to congratulate and thank Ms. Lydia Martin, her communications team. Those are mobile, by the way. You will be seeing those a lot at our events, graduations, different events that we have. We'll be dragging the SLPS around to make sure we can take pictures. Also, board members, you have a great article. You have a copy of the magazine. It's Florida Trend Magazine, each of you. It's at the, on the dais in front of you. There's a great highlight in Florida Trend about St. Lucie County, which also highlights St. Lucie County public schools and the unprecedented success that we've had over the last several years where we are a destination district and it's a wonderful article. I'm really proud of that. And Florida Trend spent quite a bit of time in our county and one of the things that they highlighted was our schools. Want to remind the education, the board, that the Education Foundation and principals, I sent this email again out to you today, the Hall of Champions luncheon, we have a couple of our favorites. Mr. E. Wayne Gent, former superintendent, is getting a lifetime achievement recognition. And also Keith Davis, once again, Mr. Dave, if, Keith, you still here? Keith, you are just racking up the wins, buddy. Keith will be recognized as the outstanding alumni award recipient. So, I hope that our principals and our senior cabinet and anybody else can join us at Tudo Fresco and those tickets can be purchased online. I think the, the proudest announcement that I have is when we, whenever we appoint a new principal. And I cannot say enough. Ayesha Boria is the new principal of Village Green Elementary School. And Ms. Boria, could you come up to the, to the podium and say a few words to us? Congratulations.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, and Superintendent, Dr. Prince. I am incredibly honored and grateful to stand before you today as the newly appointed principal of Village Green Environmental Studies, home of the Manatees. It is a privilege and responsibility that I do not take lightly and I am committed to serving your students, staff, and families with dedication and passion. I'm looking forward to working closely with a dedicated assistant principal, Megan Drost, and executive director, Latricia Wooler, to ensure the success and well-being of our students. To the faculty and staff, I'm excited to collaborate with each one of you to create a positive and nurturing learning environment where every child can thrive and become world changers of today and tomorrow. Your expertise, your dedication, your passion for teacher, excuse me, for teaching inspires me daily and I've only been there for a week and two days. And I am grateful for the opportunity to, to lead such a dedicated and talented team. Last but not least, to the students and families of our school, I am humbled by the opportunity to serve you and support your educational journey. I promise to always put your needs and well-being first and to work tirelessly along with the Village Green family to provide you with the best possible education and support. Thank you once again for this incredible opportunity. Together, Manatees, we continue to inspire, educate, and empower the next generation of leaders. Thank you.
Ms. Boria, before you go anywhere, do you have any family here and if they are, would you ask them to stand and introduce us to them?
Yes. I'm going to introduce my husband, Isaac, my two boys, Isaiah and Ivan, and my dad, Tahir Khan.
Awesome. Ms. Boria, congratulations. And, and I'm going to also say, congratulations to Village Green Elementary. You truly have a star and I'm very, very excited for you to launch your career at Village Green. Congratulations. And I certainly hope that your family is going to take you out to celebrate again tonight, right?
Yes. And I also want to mention, I do have the Fort Pierce Central family as well as Southern Oaks Middle School. I thank you so much for coming tonight to support me.
Once again, I want to remind everyone, I think every adult in here knows that works for our school system, that Friday is a non-contact student day and that, yeah, yes. And then we are launched into spring break. I want to wish everyone a wonderful spring break if you work for the school system and if you don't work for the school system, enjoy your children next week. If you go anywhere, please be safe, safe travels, and please return refreshed, rested, and we're going to get them the last nine weeks. So, with that being said, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Mr. Torcivia, any attorney report for us this evening?
No report tonight, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Board members, we will move on to a moment that I know a lot of people have been waiting for the announcement, the naming process and the results for the new Tradition Triple D High School. And I do believe, Mr. Superintendent, that the results have been tabulated?
Yes, sir. Yes, the results were tabulated and at the bottom, you'll see the final tally. Madam Chair.
I want to know what accounting firm tabulated this.
Mr. Ingersoll. The accounting firm of Triple D. So, final tally. Mr. Smith, where are you? Your new high school, Mr. Smith, will be called Legacy High School. Now, board members, it is up to us to officially recognize that as the name for our new high school. Do I have a motion to accept Legacy High School?
So moved.
Dr. Mills, thank you. Dr., um, Mr. Kelly, any discussion?
Great. I liked all three of the names. Any of them would have, would have been fine with me. It's good. Great job.
Hearing no other, then? All in favor of Legacy High School? Say yes. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, five-zero. And I want to take just a second to thank the whole committee that's gone through. It's been a long process with a lot of parent, community, student, district. It's been a long process with a lot of parent, community, student, district input. Thank you, Mr. Smith, for leading through that process, and now you have something to build upon and make a legacy. Board members, time now for our individual reports. And Dr. Mills, I'll begin with you this evening.
No comment.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. Mr. Kelly?
Yes, I just want to say, all this discussion tonight about, you know, limiting the time, and again, it's not a hill that I want to fight over, and I'm bringing it up again. This is why we have a board of five people, and we have, and I have our differences of opinions, and we look at things different ways, so we can look at it. If I had remembered from last year, a year ago, it's been a long time, I never, if I had remembered that it was only going to be one minute until you brought it up, and until, until Troy asked you and got clarification, at that time, I thought that you might be incorrect, because I never remember one minute after 21 people. If you recollect, when I was speaking tonight, I said, "The reason it isn't fair is, you know, three minutes, five minutes, that's not fair." But I can hear 20 people in an hour at three minutes, and I only can hear 12 at five minutes. And I was referring to that in my head, that that three minutes was there for the first 21 people. I was under a different impression. So that goes to why you have to listen to other board members, and thank you, Troy, for asking for the explanation, because I never would have seconded the vote if I knew it was only going to be one minute for the first 21. So I apologize for not remembering it correctly, but I still think five minutes and three minutes is, that's not fair. And I hope we can compromise, Dr. Mills, because you're right, one minute is not enough. That isn't fair. So, but I think five and three has to be looked at. I think three is, would be good all the time, everywhere, up until 21 people or whatever. So I never would have made the second if I had memorized that. Thank you for clarifying, Troy. And I think you had trepidation when you clarified it, too.
Ms. Richardson?
I have no report tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Ingersoll?
No report.
I have no report, other than to wish everyone a fabulous spring break. Hope you get to do something fun with your family and friends and catch up on some rest. There being no other business to come before us this evening, again, have a wonderful spring break, and we are adjourned.